This meeting of the Oyster River School Board will come to order. Just before we get started, we're having a slightly different order of the agenda. We're going to -- because I'm sure that this whole group here is not here to watch us go through the manifest.
[laughter]
As riveting as that is. So what we're going to do initially is to have the pledge, and then we'll have the ceremony, the dedication of this wonderful new facility, and we're so proud to be here. And then, after that, we'll move into the regular agenda and have the manifests at the end. If that's agreeable to everyone. Okay? Okay. So can we all stand for the pledge, please?
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now, I believe Dennis Harrington is here. Right?
He was here.
Eric is not here? You're gonna find him. Okay. We'll wait for Dennis.
Laurie, you were in charge of keeping Dennis in the room.
He's coming back on the flag.
All right. Dennis, we called you to the podium five minutes ago.
I figured it would be nice if we put the flag up.
We did. We saluted it while you were carrying it in.
So what's going on?
Judge her to give the speech. The speech you prepared?
Oh, okay. He told me it could only be a minute and a half.
I told him it could be three to five, Dennis.
Even less than that.
Dennis, that microphone's portable.
I know.
And you can take it right up and speak. Keep it close to the lips, okay?
All right. This is really more emotional than I thought. Twenty-five years. John Lowey told me, and he's probably my greatest mentor, when I first walked into this place, that it was beautiful, well-constructed, in terms of educational functionality, but there was one tragic flaw, and that was that there was no separation of the lunchroom and the cafeteria, and the multipurpose room made no sense. He was absolutely correct. I didn't prepare that piece, but I wanted that very famous, good man to be, in my mind, to be part of what I said. And by the way, he was the Massway principal. So there are connections. There is little more to say to everyone, but thank you. Thank you to Dr. Morse for seeing almost immediately upon arrival the need for our children to have a better cafeteria, and most importantly, for our physical education program to have a dedicated space for children to learn. Thank you to the board for supporting him when he saw an opportunity, and you collectively seized it and moved forward. Thank you to the Mohairamit staff, and in particular Jessica Whalen for her flexibility during construction and her input during the project. Thank you to Jim Rozicki, Maintenance Supervisor, and Susan Caswell, Business Administrator, for their constant attention to the project and to the maintenance staff for consistently responding to the needs created. And thank you to the town officials who really made it relatively easy to get this project It's a good thing when the body politic can think beyond the immediate temptation to behave in a way that Robert Burton, a 17th-century scholar, defined as penny-wise and pound-foolish, and instead welcomed the opportunity to enhance the lives and education of students. And there's a funny story that goes with this. I thought Benjamin Franklin said those words, and my staff, looking at what I do, said, "Dennis, you've got to be accurate. Benjamin Franklin did not say those words." So then I had to look up and figure out who in the name of God was Robert Burton. I thought he played for the Patriots. Children and families will use these two spaces for generations to come, and as Mohairamit's principal, once again, on behalf of the current generation of children and families of Mohairamit and the next generations of children who will thrive in the spaces we have created together, I thank you.
Al?
This is odd, because it's really high for me.
You can pull it down.
I'd like to make a motion to, now that we have this super-nice cafeteria and gym, to name this the Dennis Harrington Cafeteria Gym.
And it gives me great pleasure to second that motion. Moved by Al, seconded by Kenan.
the board to consider doing this, one of the things I said to them was, "It's really, really sad that we wait for people to go before we honor them." And I really wanted to take the time with this facility to honor Dennis. Now, this is an interesting school. Our select people are here. Guys, would you stand up? This is an interesting school because these select people and the people who live in the town of Madbury truly believe that this school belongs to them, even though it's part of a cooperative. And if you have any doubt about that, the back end of this gym is 15 feet from the town line, and we had to get a variance to do this work. And if you have any doubt about it, even though we weren't their first thought, we certainly were their second thought when they added parking down by the ball field. This school is part of a wonderful cooperative. If you have any doubt about that, just look to the back. Our city administrator from Durham is here, along with our Madbury selectmen, to celebrate this facility, because his children go here. So for 25 years, this gentleman has advocated for a gymnasium through many superintendents, until finally I arrived, and I said, "Dennis, why does Massway have a dedicated cafeteria? The high school have one, and the middle school have one, but we're having our kids eat in a gym?" And he said, "Interesting story behind that." And he pointed to the alcove right here in the middle of the room, where there was supposed to be a folding wall, and the gym was supposed to be separate from the cafeteria. But it took 25 years of perseverance, dedication, and probably a little bit of irritation with superintendent after superintendent who really weren't attuned to the needs of the children at Mohairamit as well as Dennis was. Because Dennis is indeed an advocate for the children. For all 25 years of children that went through here, he has advocated for this space. So it's my honor, Dennis, truly my honor. Tomorrow, Jim Rozicki will have this over the door of this cafeteria, so that when the kids come to school tomorrow, they'll see the name of this room is in honor of their living principal. And I predicted your administrative colleagues, to your administrative colleagues, that you would be totally embarrassed and never have wanted this honor, but so be it. So we have a whole bunch of people tonight, Dennis, who have wanted to take the time to celebrate this with you. I will tell you that your closest ally in this building, Laurie, has known about this for a month and kept it from you. So we now know that she's a good secret keeper. The entire faculty has known about it for a month, and you haven't, so we know they can keep a good secret. And the entire town has known. And nobody told you. So this would be just the most amazing, best secret of all. So I also want to take the time to point out the architect, Steve Black. And I'm not seeing the contractor. Andre. Andre and Marty. In terms of any project I've been associated with, Marty, the superintendent of this job, has been amazing. We went through this project without a hitch. Everything that happened was predictable. Everything that was happening was on time, except for one thing, which was the contractor that had to lay the rubberized floor hadn't mixed the color in time, so it cost us a week. But other than that, we were on schedule, and I know that our phys ed teacher and our chef are thrilled that their rooms are now divided. So I don't know who wanted to grab the microphone first, but Dennis, you just have to stand here until we're done.
Okay. So I've had the honor and privilege of having known this man for many years. Both my husband and I started our teaching career in Somersworth in 1974 with Dennis as principal of two schools. So my husband was the phys ed teacher of Hilltop and Chandler, and Dennis was the principal of both schools. Chandler was built in 1898. I think the footprint was about the size of this room, because it was three stories, and the playground was pavement all around the perimeter, so that you had to put an adult at this corner, an adult at that corner, so you could monitor the kids. Chain-link fence around the whole thing, two swings and a sandbox. The cafeteria was half this space, because the other half was the gym. The gym had a carpet, those metal baseboards around the edge for the heat, and then concrete posts holding up the whole building, placed here, there, and everywhere in the room, so that Mike had to put, you know, big mats around with duct tape, so that if a kid crashed into a pole, he didn't knock himself out. The cafeteria was stunning. It was all concrete, and it had pipes everywhere. Dennis served us McDonald's breakfast in a paper bag for our staff meeting at the beginning of the year.
They were $0.99.
Yes, they were. And so all I have to say is, you've come a long way, baby.
I just sought her advice today, along with four other kids.
Hi, my name is Zoe Selig. I'm really excited about the new lunchroom, because it's quieter and everybody seems to really like it. My favorite part about the new lunchroom is having fewer kids eating lunch at a time. On the first day of school, Mr. Harrington declared there would be no more silent Tuesday lunches, and everybody cheered, including Mr. Harrington. Mr. Harrington has been really excited about getting the new lunchroom and not having to have any more silent lunch. He's really nice, and he's a great principal. He comes into our classrooms and helps kids with problems. He knows every student, and he cares. He has put a lot of work into this school and greets kids every morning. Mr. Harrington really deserves to have this new lunchroom dedicated to him. Thank you.
We'd like to share with you the top 10 reasons why this gymnasium and cafeteria should be dedicated to Mr. Dennis Harrington.
I'm two.
Ten. Ten: He likes to eat. Nine: He likes to cook.
Eight: He does the floors, and lunch duty, and recess duty, and bus duty, and anything else that needs doing.
Number six.
Seven: He's dedicated to sustainability. We love Igor.
Number six: This cafeteria has been on his to-do list forever.
Five: He believes in the power of conversation.
Four: He has worked tirelessly for over 25 years to create community within and outside these walls.
Three: He supports anything that helps staff so that they can be passionate, emotionally healthy, masterful educators.
Number two: He believes in doing what is best for children, and with a dedicated physical education space and a lunchroom, we add to that list.
And number 10: Mr. Harrington is respected, revered, and much loved throughout our community. He is Mr. Mohairamit.
I'm Doris Demarest, the Food Service Director. My first assignment at Oyster River Schools consisted of attending the National Farm-to-School Conference in Burlington, Vermont, and that was where I met Dennis Harrington. I was pleasantly surprised that a school principal would take a week of his summer and dedicate it solely to nutrition. Since that time, he has always had the best interest of our program at heart, and he understands that a healthy nutrition program means much more than just switching out the food on the tray. The environment in which that food is served can make the difference between good food actually becoming nutrition because it's been eaten or going into the trash. I truly value the positive support of Dennis, of all our administrators, and our board, Dr. Morse, for making this happen. I promise, Dennis, just for you, I'll be menuing Chicken Alfredo in November. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julianne O'Quinn. I'm a fourth grader in Mr. Lee's class. All the kids are really excited about having the new gym and lunchroom. Mr. Martin doesn't have to move the tables around as much, and there's definitely less space for Mr. Martin to clean up at lunchtime, and Ms. Whalen likes having her own space, too. We don't have to have silent lunch every Tuesday. My favorite part about the new lunchroom is that when you go to buy snack, you don't have to worry about getting hit by flying balls. It doesn't feel as busy, and there's more room. Thank you to all the grown-ups who have gave us this lunchroom.
Let's see if I can do this off the cuff. This is from my family. My wife, my daughter, my son, both went to school here for their entire career, the entire Oyster River district, both children did. And what I wanted to mention was what Mr. Harrington has done for the program that associates my family as much with this school, which is the maple sugaring program. This man is the man that made this all happen. We've all been part of it for many years. He asked Mr. Milliken and Mrs. Camp, they're all party here tonight, but it was Mr. Harrington that always said, "Yes." I'm going to steal a line from your gamebook all the time. And he said yes to this program, and he continued to say yes. He continues to say yes to this day in this project. I've been now involved with it for almost 20 years, and we have some others that I hope will speak to it as well, that Mr. Milliken, Mr. Tuller, the original people that did this and started this whole project, but the real person that has made this work year after year after year, including last year, when he made a huge push to get more people involved so the program wouldn't disappear. Thank you, Dennis. This room--
Hi, my name is Beth Hawley. I am the co-chair of the Mohairamit PTO, and I'm honored to represent the thousands of parents who, over the past 25 years, have been lucky enough to call Dennis Harrington their child's elementary school principal. It's true. It seems to me that people become educators to make a difference to the students that are in their school, to teach children that they can accomplish their goals and become whoever they want in the world. Dennis shows that you can make a difference in students' lives by the day-to-day things you do for them. These small acts of kindness and caring make a big impression on our children. To get some examples of these acts of kindness and caring, I asked some of the children, and here's what they said about Dennis. "He wears really cool ties and is very funny." The ties came up a lot. "I like the rules he has made for us. He's keeping us safe. He's the best Mr. Harrington ever. I like how he called me Peg Leg Joe when I broke my foot. I like his ties a lot. I'm happy that he takes time to read to us in the wing. I like it when he claps to get our attention. It's almost like he's making music with his hands." And here's one that came from an alumni. "I was only at Mohairamit for one year, my fourth grade year. Years later, when I graduated from high school, I got a letter from him congratulating me. I still remember that. What a guy." He's never reminded us of how many hours he's here or how hard he works. He's simply at Mohairamit because he loves Mohairamit, and for that, we, parents, thank you.
I'm Mark Milliken from Madbury. Jim, you stole my speech, wherever you are. Dennis, you have the largest, most loving, multi-generational family of anybody I know, and you deserve it, and I think it's a large part in-- the reason is the faith that you put in people. And it's interesting that you mentioned John Lowey as one of your greatest mentors. You're one of my greatest mentors, and it's such a privilege to be able to say that to you. Little story. Back in the '90s, Steve Tuller and I both taught here and had a great idea of how we might be able to increase the maple syrup production, which was, at that time, Helen, happening in the classroom. And it just was, you know, we went to Dennis and said, "Dennis, I have a wood stove in my basement. Do you think maybe we could put it out in the parking lot and increase production?" And Dennis said, "Yes." And we needed pans to boil syrup, and Steve and I drove around to restaurants, and the chef at the Portsmouth Sheridan gave us some big meat pans to put on top of the wood stove, which we had taken the cover off, to boil the syrup. And there were two pans, so the smoke would come up and roll, and it produced this wonderful smoky maple syrup flavor. And then Steve said, "Well, we need more trees to tap. Dennis, can we take the kids further out into the woods?" And Dennis said, "Yes." I can't tell you all the stories, Dennis, but it was a wonderful experience. Friday nights, families would come by to visit. Hot dogs boiled in Mohairamit sap are some of the best hot dogs--
You and your family and his family were out there want to talk.
I wasn't going to tell you that, but yes. But because of Dennis, and because of Dennis's faith in people and trust in people and saying yes to people, I'm now the new dean of faculty at Oyster River High School, in large part because you're my model, role model, and I'm now in a position to be able to say yes. And I just want to thank you very much for that.
I'm not used to having to use one of these in here. For those of you who don't know me, which most of you do, I'm Jessica Whalen. I am the PE teacher here at Mohairamit, and I am a very happy lady. That's it. That's it. Okay. No, no, I knew I'd forget stuff, so I wrote some stuff down. Although I think Zoe and Julianne said everything that I was thinking. They did a great job. I began teaching here six years ago, after spending my first eight years over at the middle school. And the first year, Dennis said to me, "We need to get PE its own space." And I said, "Great, let's go. Works for me." But I didn't hold my breath. And each year, he kept saying, "You'll have your own space." Honestly, I said, "I'm probably going to retire before this happens." I grew up in the district. I knew what was happening. Probably retired by then. I know in many schools, the specials, if you want to call them specials, PE, art, music, are not a top priority in some schools. Not so in the Oyster River District, especially at Mohairamit. He values every member of this building, from classroom teachers to specialists, custodians to paraprofessionals, and everyone in between. I can't look at you. Your opinion and needs matter with Dennis. He saw the effect a shared inadequate space was having on the children of Mohairamit, and he pushed to make that better. Afternoon kindergartners only had half a gym for PE class, while the other side was used for children eating a silent lunch. I know they didn't like it, and Dennis and I surely didn't like that they had to do that either. It was the only solution if the kindergartners and I were going to be able to actually hear each other, though. Students would also lose use of the gym about 15 times a year due to various needs. It wasn't acceptable for classroom teachers to lose their space that often, and Dennis said to me, "It's not acceptable for students to lose your classroom either." Fast forward to last Thursday. The first class was able to use the new gym. I wish Dennis could-- actually, it was Sarah's class, and I wish Dennis could have seen their face. First of all, as I tricked them, I walked to their classroom to get them, like we were going outside again, and I said, "Bad news." And they just dropped their heads, because we'd been outside for four weeks. And I said, "You can't go outside today. You have to use the new gym." And I think the screams could be heard around the school. I'm pretty sure they were, actually. But I wish Dennis could see their faces as they walked in, knowing they were the first class to get to use a new space. 21 third graders had wide eyes and smiles just as wide. The best moment for me came this Monday, actually. Fifteen kindergartners raced around the gym, squealing with delight as they learned about movement patterns and personal space. On the other side of this wall, which is now open, completely unaware-- On the other side of this wall, which is now open, completely unaware of the organized chaos taking place 10 feet from them, sat 120 students not eating a silent lunch, which was phenomenal. At the end of the day, actually, Teresa Trombley said to me, "I had no idea you had kindergartners over there." She was here, watching lunch, making sure nobody was getting hurt, and I was screaming with kids over there, with delight. She had no idea I was there. It was fantastic. Thank you, Dennis, for wanting only the best for our 412 students, and for making this PE teacher feel supported in her profession.
Hi, I'm Kenny Rotner, and inspired to kind of piggyback onto a lot of things that have been said tonight. And I think of Dennis, and I think back to my principals, and I don't know what all of your elementary school lives were like, or middle school, but the only time I ever saw the principal was when I was in trouble. And it was always to get yelled at and to get punished. And that was the only time he was ever involved in our school. Tracy and I have a daughter who has gone through Oyster River, and probably, maybe it was 1999, she started here at school. We went for the bus ride that parents do with their kids to kind of see what that's like, and she's off to school, and she's doing fine. And maybe about a month into school or so, how we used to play together changed. And all of a sudden, I was always Mr. Harrington. That was the game. And we did all these school activities and whatever, and all kinds of things about life, but I was no longer daddy. I was Mr. Harrington. And I thought, "Well, he must be someone special. I hope he's someone special." But, you know, she's doing her thing, and she's happy, and I wasn't involved with school. And the first time I really met Dennis was, it was the Memorial Day Parade in Durham, where Dennis leads MoHerramitt. And I walked up to him, and I said, "Hello, Mr. Harrington, I'm Mr. Harrington." And that started a relationship. And through all these years, I've come to see the respect that Dennis has for really everybody in this world. Respect for the children in the school, respect for parents of the children, respect for his faculty and other staff, his belief that ideas are to be discussed, that answers come through conversation, that maybe you think you have the right answer, but after you talk, you change your mind sometimes. Things kind of develop from that kind of dialogue. And I've learned through the years of knowing Dennis how important that is to have those conversations, to involve everyone in making decisions, and keeping true to your heart that who he's representing and who he's done for all these years is our children. And Dennis, I can't thank you enough, and I'm forever indebted for what you've done.
A comment upon the motion to dedicate the gym and cafeteria to Dennis? Is there any board member would like to speak?
Guess I can. You know, it's really bizarre for me to be sitting on this side of the table, because I mean, not many people may know, although all the MoHerramitt people will know, but a couple of years ago, I was actually wandering around this old cafeteria in a costume, trying to get kids to eat Brussels sprouts. So it's really surrealistic now that you're here on this side of the table. But the thing that always struck me, now, you know, that I'm also in my early 50s and I finally graduated fourth grade, is that when I came to MoHerramitt, what a welcoming environment it was for all the kids. Every kid was always greeted by Dennis and made to feel at home. And it wasn't just the kids, it was the parents, too. This place has an amazing way of drawing people in, that they volunteer and they get involved. And I think that really forms the bedrock of our community and our schools, that makes us special. So thank you, Dennis.
Dennis?
I told this story a few months ago, but I'm going to tell it again tonight, that when I, as a new school board member, my son had attended MoHerramitt, but it'd been many years, so I was visiting all the schools, and I met with Dennis, and he brought me into his office, it was May, and there was a video camera set up in the corner of the room, and he had to leave for a minute to attend to something. And I looked at that video camera, and I knew instantly what it was. And he walked back in, and I said, "You're doing your fourth grade interviews, aren't you?" And, you know, I still have my son's, which was, at the time, of course, it was on cassette tape, that's how long ago it was, but, you know, just to do that with every single student in the school. And I still have mine, and I actually got it out and listened to it after that day. So thank you.
Thank you. Board members, who'd like to speak? Okay, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion to name, dedicate, and name the cafeteria gym to Dennis Harrington, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. The student rep is not here, so the motion is carried. So what we thought we'd do now is take a 15-minute recess, and for refreshments and conversation, we'll come back at about five of seven. All right?